I'd like to call to order the special public meeting of the Elmwood Park Mayor and Council for November 29th, 2018, at 8:00 PM to order. On roll call, Councilwoman Balastiri.
Here.
Burke.
Here.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Here.
Pellegrine.
Here.
Goleback.
Here.
Mayor Caramagna.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Can anyone, everyone, please rise for a prayer, a flagpole. Oh God, our Father, we ask you to bless our meeting, which trust to your fatherly care and protection. Please remove all selfishness and prejudice from our hearts and implant therein keen sense of justice and greater law for you and our neighbors. Guide us in our deliberations so that our decisions will always pursue and bring you peace and happiness to our community. Praise your leaders to the God of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, it's chapter 231 of the Public Laws of the State of New Jersey requires that commencement of every meeting, a statement of compliance be read by the presenting officer. Now therefore be advised that the meeting requirements for this meeting have been met by publishing an annual meeting notice in the record and the heralds of Elmwood Park. And by post such notice, the office or the borough clerk as well as the public place within the municipal building by notifying interested citizens. Said notice was posted on November 27, 2018. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being videotaped and will be on cable vision, chapter 77, on Mondays at 3:00 PM, Thursdays 11:30 AM, and Fridays at 10:00 AM. The videos also available at the borough website, www.elmwoodparkaj.us. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, next thing on the agitum under resolutions are R 409-18, appoint Acting Municipal Clerk Erin Delaney. Whereas on August 20th, 2018, a letter of resignation was submitted by Keith Kazmark to Mayor Caramagna effective August 31st, 2018, and whereas interviews were conducted by the mayor and council to fill the vacancy of the municipal clerk position. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park that the following name be and is hereby appointed as Acting Municipal Clerk effective November 29th, 2018, for a period of one year, term ending November 28th, 2019, at an annual salary of $70,000, $70,000.
Every motion and to resolve.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor. I'd like to have discussion.
You have a question?
I'd like to have discussion.
You want to issue something?
Yeah. I'd like to address some serious concern about the process and the selection of the new municipal, Acting Municipal Clerk. After the resignation of our former clerk, the mayor and council received 22 resumes for the municipal clerk position. We collectively narrowed it down to eight people and interviewed seven of them. From the onset, myself and Councilman Burke advocated for the promotion of within and the appointment of our deputy clerk, Barbara Disfotto, for the position of the municipal clerk. Barbara is a certified municipal clerk, has the experience, the institutional knowledge of the borough and its operations, and has stepped up and in and done a phenomenal job making sure the borough operations continue undisturbed after Keith's departure. All of the council members felt Barbara was qualified to take on the additional work and unanimously voted to approve a stipend for her to take on the additional responsibilities. Sadly, we all heard the rumors over the last month that a deal had been striking by the mayor and the position was promised to a Democratic councilwoman from Garfield. During our work session on November 19th, 2018, some of our residents confronted the mayor and the council about these rumors, and the mayor discredited them, saying he wasn't sure how those started. Out of the seven people that were interviewed, all but one person had municipal government experience and all but two had their municipal clerk's license. So I ask, why did the four members of the Democratic majority choose someone who had never worked in a municipal government? Why are they hiring somebody without a clerk certification? And why do we need to pay to have this candidate go to school when we already have an existing employee that has earned the certification? Lastly, I'd like to say I'm highly disappointed in the new council-elect women. You were either told or chose not to partake in the interview process for a critical position and one you will interact with daily during your next three years of a term. By doing so, you let the council majority just make the decision for you. You passed up providing input, especially when one of you has seen Barbara's work firsthand, because Denise, you are a Board of Health member and you saw the work and what she is capable of providing. I hope going forward, you both take steps to make independent decision and not fall in line and uniformly agree on everything. In closing, I'd like to ask each council member and the mayor how they justify to the taxpayer passing up somebody who has the years of experience and the required certification to make yet another political appointment of somebody as acting clerk when they have a certified clerk on staff and doing the job.
You done? Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
As far as for myself, I do fall in line with what Councilman, what Maggie said. I'm just looking at the resolution and my question is, and just looking at it, therefore be it resolved, the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park, the following name. During this whole process, I never heard the mayor's pick, I never heard justification for the mayor's pick, nor was I asked my pick afterwards. We were given, should give our four names. I gave them in order, Barbara was first. And all my other names were people that were certified with the RMC, with all intentions of hoping that an Elmwood Park resident, an Elmwood Park graduate would be able to continue her career here in Elmwood Park as moving up the ladder. I also haven't heard an actual justification. Most times when it comes to someone being hired, or a promotion, or even a raise, you would hear a justification to this, and I've gotten neither of that during this process. I felt that the, the night before, last minute special meeting, and now we're calling this resolution to hire someone, and I apologize to the young lady who was hired, because this has nothing to do with her abilities and, you know, credentials, or at this point the lack of credentials when it comes to the RMC. I'm just disappointed that the person that was falling in line was not picked, because there's plenty of justification to have her here. That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, may I? And I apologize if some of this is redundant, but I, you know, wanted to go through the process. So yes, in August, our borough clerk slash administrator resigned from the borough. We then advertised for BA slash clerk in hopes that we could maybe, you know, find a joint position. Seeing the applications that came in, it was evident that there was a niche market for a BA clerk, that it just isn't a popular concept, given the low amount of applicants we had who indicated that they would do that. So we then put out an advertisement for clerk, and as was said, we received somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 applications. This council did take the time and narrowed that list down to eight, by everyone picking their top four. One was no longer interested in the position, we went to seven. So mayor and council spent four hours interviewing seven different candidates, after which the mayor asked the council to advise, you know, take some time to think about and advise him of who their recommendation is, and then would take that into account and place a name on the agenda. It's very evident that a majority of the council members chose Ms. Delaney to be on the agenda. My vote for a candidate in any position is never a reflection of anyone else who applied for that position. I firmly believe it's never appropriate to publicly discuss other applicants in a hiring process publicly, period, ever, for any position. It's just not the proper way to deal with personnel matters. We go through, there are some positions that the council plays a very hands-on role in the hiring process, key positions within the borough, department heads and so forth. We go through that process. Everyone has a different weight as to what they value in a candidate, what they want to see in a position. They take everything into account and come to their own independent position. I will be the voting on this nominee for her merits. A very strong academic background with a master's in public administration, firsthand experience to the work we do on a governing body in another town, strong interpersonal and communication skills, demonstrated a very strong understanding of what this clerk position entails, and showed a commitment to obtaining this license that there's so much talk about. Let's do talk about the license for a second. The state of New Jersey created this position, the borough clerk position, through statute. And in that statute, the state of New Jersey legislature didn't say, "You must have a license to be a borough clerk," period. If you don't have a license, clearly you're going to be one. They intended to create a way for boroughs to find an individual that they feel could perform the job, that they had confidence in, and they gave them not one, not two, but three years to work towards getting that license. States never changed that, or there's never been no movement to change that. Why? Because communities, they take advantage of this. Over decades, many neighboring communities have taken advantage of this, where they've hired an individual and supported their path towards getting the certification. Happened here 12 years ago. 12 years ago, everyone was in the same room talking about this issue and how a candidate was put up without a license, and how could they possibly be the borough clerk and so forth. And it turned out, that person was hired, got their license, and served this borough for over 10 years and took on more responsibilities as time went on. The council made a decision and it worked out just fine. I think in this scenario, as many other towns have done, this scenario will work out just fine. I do want to very briefly respond to some of the comments. First of all, Democratic councilwoman, as far as I know, Garfield has a nonpartisan form of government, unless that changed in the last two weeks. So I don't know if you're looking at party registration of people who are applying or being appointed jobs. I've always been against judging someone's politics when we're hiring for a job. I think it's inappropriate to bring that into the equation. As Americans, we have every right to be registered, be not registered, pick a party or not pick a party. Why that's an issue, I have no idea, but it keeps coming up. And in terms of rumors of deals being struck, and this really goes at the core, so I want to talk about just rumors in general in Elmwood Park. Prior to the mayor being sworn in, prior to Councilwoman Balastiri and Pellegrine being sworn in, when, you know, the majority changed, for lack of a better word, there were so many rumors. There was going to be a police director hired, there was going to be the deputy chief position coming back. Three department heads were going to get fired on day one. None of those things came even close to being true, just chatter on the streets. With just this position, I heard three separate distinct rumors. I heard, yes, the rumor that a deal was struck. I heard that because two applicants indicate that they speak Italian, that the mayor found someone to do this job. And then the third version I heard was one of the applicants was close to one of the party chairman in another county, and that somehow it was going to be that. The rumor mill is rampant in this town. Whatever the motivations of those who spread these rumors are, I can't tell you, but it's only to cast doubt on our work here as a council, as a mayor and council, trying to improve the community. So these people who create these rumors are right, they created rumors around half of the applicants we interviewed. Congratulations, you had a 50% chance of your rumors succeeding as we went through this process. I think, you know, just for myself, in conclusion, it was a thorough process, a fair process, and I have nothing else to add, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to clarify one statement, I mean, clarify all of them, but just one point about Keith when he applied 12 years ago, and I did Oprah request his resume and his letter. He had four out of the five classes completed for his registration, so yes, he didn't have his clerk degree, but he had four out of the five classes completed. He had a municipal and county experience, and that's it.
If I may, Mayor, just to go out, to change this into Rumorville and Democrats, Republicans, this is about this particular issue, okay? And this is what I'm speaking to. As far as any kind of rumors which went out with the fire person being hired, it means nothing to me. What I'm saying is that we have somebody that is already qualified and here, and we hired somebody, and we're going to get to that, that has to get those qualifications. And we can't even call her a clerk, she has to be acting. So the thing is, is I'm just trying to figure out how we could change this and not spin this to a political thing, because it's not. It's just a reality thing to me. The reality of it is, is we have a qualified person in a position that was not allowed to move on, being a resident of Elmwood Park, and also graduating from Elmwood Park High School, and also working here. Knows how everything is, works with everybody in the building. I've heard nothing but good things about what's going on, so that's what it's about. It's not about, you know, who's a Democrat, Republican, it makes no difference to me. What I'm saying is that there's four, there's, all the names that were brought up, and I said it, this is, and because there's not, and again, apologies, Barbara and I, and I apologize to the young lady in the audience. This is not my thing. My thing is that we had, we all got to pick our names. I put it in order, because initially it was asked in order. I put Barbara number one, and that's who it should have been. But someone comes up, and then four people picked someone that didn't have any qualifications. I had to go back and look to see, maybe I missed something. I thought I missed something in a resume or something like that. So that's what I'm talking about, you know? And then when somebody, when the public was at the meeting and they said something, it was, they were poo-pooed, they said, "No, it's not that way." And then we had no discussions. I wasn't expecting to do this. I thought we were having a meeting before this meeting to talk about it. That's where I would have, I would have laid out my line in the back room here and just left it at that, instead of doing it in front of all these people. This wasn't my goal. This meeting is a last-minute called meeting, okay? And we had no work session prior to it. So when do we get to voice our opinion, whether we're Republican or Democrat, or disagree or agree? That's what I want to know. And why does it have to be, well, rumors from 12 years ago, this, what? To me, it's irrelevant. It's irrelevant. Whether Mr. Kazmark had four, or five, or six of his, before he got his RMC, we have somebody with a RMC, somebody that went to school, somebody that's participating as, doing some of the work as administrator here. So that's what I'm talking about. I'm not talking about anything else other than that. So I don't appreciate when people say, you know, "Don't spin off into rumors and all, you know, we're going to do deputy chief and all that stuff." That doesn't mean anything. I'm just trying to get away from where I'm at, where I'm talking about at this point. That's what it is. I was very upset last night, because I didn't find out this until I got home from work last night at like 5:00. I asked a question somebody didn't know about it until, because they weren't home, and they said, "That's 5:00 last night. When are we supposed to have this discussion?" I didn't, nobody called me, asked for my opinion. And I didn't hear the mayor's opinion, and I didn't hear the mayor's justification, or anybody's justification. That's all, so the thing is, is that's why I'm bringing it up, and that's why I'm talking to this point, okay? If we're going to do it, we do it right. Justifications, no matter what it is, jobs, promotions, raises, it's the way it should be. Shouldn't be any other way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Okay, on roll call, Balastiri.
Yes.
Burke.
No.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
No.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next thing on the agenda are ordinances. We have Resolution 410-18, introduce ordinance number 18-30 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the salary, wage, and compensation of the white collar, blue collar employees, members of the Elmwood Park White Collar, Blue Collar Employee Association of the Borough of Elmwood Park, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, from January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2023, be passed and adopted on first reading. And be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, December 20th, 2018 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as same can be heard, at which time any person interested in said ordinance can be heard. Be it further resolved that the deputy borough clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise in a legal newspaper a notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
We have a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
On roll call, Balastiri.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolution 411-18, introduce ordinance number 18-31 on first reading. Be it resolved that an ordinance entitled, an ordinance to fix the salary, wage, and compensation of the officers, employees, and servants of the Borough of Elmwood Park, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey for the year 2018, be passed and adopted on first reading. And be it resolved that a final hearing on said ordinance will be heard in the municipal building on Thursday, December 20th, 2018 at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, as same can be heard, at which time any person interested in said ordinance can be heard. Be it resolved that the deputy borough clerk be, and she is hereby authorized to advertise in a legal newspaper a notice of introduction and final hearing as required by law.
We have a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
On roll call, Balastiri.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Abstain.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Mayor, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have Resolution 412-18, payment of bills. Resolution 413-18, confirmation of payroll. Resolution 414-18, transfer of funds. Resolution 415-18, authorized emergency sewer force main repair. Resolution 416-18, authorized third quarter fire department stipend program. Resolution 417-18, resolution endorsing the 2019 CBGB grant application improvements to Elmwood Terrace and Donor Avenue. Resolution 418-18, resolution approving the 2017 compensation adjustment for Roy Rigatano. Resolution 419-18, appointment of full-time and part-time public safety telecommunications for the police department. Resolution 420-18, resolution to rescind the police tower ordinance. Resolution 421-18, resolution to accept the consent agenda.
I may have a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to pull Resolution 418-18 from the consent agenda.
Can we have a motion on the consent agenda minus 418-18?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, on roll call, pulling, on roll call for the consent agenda, minus Resolution 418-18. Balastiri.
Yes, on everything, except I recuse on R 419-18 and 420-18.
Okay. Burke.
Yes.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carries. Give me one second. Okay, Resolution 418-18, resolution approving the 2017 compensation adjustment for Roy Rigatano. Whereas Roy Rigatano, borough chief financial officer and qualified purchasing agent, has agreed to compensation for the year 2017, and whereas the position of chief financial officer and qualified purchasing agent will be incorporated into the salary ordinance and said compensation-based salary shall be the chief financial officer for 2017 for $127,000 and qualified purchasing agent for $7,500. Therefore be it resolved by the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park, County of Bergen, State of New Jersey, that they hereby approve Roy Rigatano's salary as chief financial officer and qualified purchasing agent for 2017.
Mayor, quick discussion. The reason I abstained from the introduction in the ordinance 18-31 and pulled this one from the consent agenda is because this year, when we parted ways with our CFO in Parkridge, we relied on Roy's help with our budget and some financials. So since I did ask him, or introduced him to our mayor and council, and he did help out in Parkridge, I just don't feel it's right voting for a salary increase for him. But that's my reason for abstaining.
Okay. Okay, Mayor, we need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
On roll call, Balastiri.
Yes.
Burke.
2017, I will abstain, not here, however, it's just a, that's a pretty good raise for one year, but I will abstain.
Okay, Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Abstain.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, also, Mayor, we had a late addition of a resolution endorsing a CBGB grant for a local group home in town. So I'm going to read that resolution into the minutes. Resolution 422-18, whereas the mayor and council of the Borough of Elmwood Park wishes to endorse a request from Community Options Incorporated for an application made to Bergen County Community Development Block Grant, and whereas the grant, if awarded by Bergen County Community Block Grant, in the amount of $30,000 will be used to rehabilitate one residential home at 25 Linwood Avenue, Elmwood Park, New Jersey. Now therefore be resolved that the Borough of Elmwood Park endorses said request via this resolution in the amount of $30,000.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Okay, on roll call for Resolution 422-18, Balastiri.
Yes.
Burke.
Yes.
Dombrowski is absent. Jeanne Dominico.
Yes.
Pellegrine.
Yes.
Goleback.
Yes.
Motion carries. Mayor, that's the end of my portion of the meeting.
Thank you. Jeanne Dominico.
On behalf of the ambulance, we haven't met, but they are always in a dire need for volunteers, so if you're looking to help out, the number you can contact is 201-796-3843. I'd like to thank our police chief and the two officers in the back for providing additional security and making sure that our meeting is in order for this special meeting. So chief and the two officers, thank you for providing additional security for our council meeting. That's it, Mayor.
Progress.
As far as the DPW, we continue to pick up the leaves per section. The street sweeper is sweeping daily due to the heavy rain and leaf season. Every street may not be swept each week, but they will make up and cover it on another day. The new water tank is in service. There are a few items that still need to be addressed, but the tank and water system are working, operating. There are some residents' concerns about leaf piles. Please, if you do not, if you have a leaf pile, do not park your car right on top of the leaf pile, because you can, the car can catch on fire. Please also keep the leaves far away from the storm drain covers as well. And we will continue to pick up leaves until middle of December. As you all have seen, the clock is standing. It's been in storage for at least 10-plus years, so now it's a beautiful addition to the community. It'll take a few weeks now to get the site cleaned up and to get to the completion of the clock. So we're all very proud that that's in place now. Also, recreation, we do have a beautiful new tree outside the recreation center. The tree lighting will be on December 7th from 6:30 to 9:00. There will be a human snow globe crafts and a polar extreme obstacle course, so please, you know, come and enjoy that evening with us. The Kinder Crew Winter Soccer begins December 2nd through January 20th on Sunday mornings for four to six-year-olds, and basketball practices have started. Progress, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Pellegrine.
Yes, good evening, everyone. My Board of Health update, their meeting was held on November 19th. They're currently working on a nuisance ordinance. This ordinance will cover any matter, thing, condition, or act which is or may become detrimental or a menace to the health of inhabitants of this municipality. I will update you more on details when they become available. The rabies clinic was held last night at Firehouse Number Four. 82 vaccines were administered. This was the highest mount coming in three years. The next rabies clinic will be in the spring, date and time to be determined, and their next meeting will be December 10th at 7:00 PM. My police update, police department was able to secure $14,000 for a pedestrian safety initiative. They will be conducting decoy details. These details will be starting in the early spring. Another proactive approach by our police department, so we thank them for that. Also, they participated in No Shave November. This raised $300 for cancer research. They have extended the campaign into December, and the donations will be collected for the Brandon Petrosi Fund. Brandon is the son of Sergeant Nick Petrosi, who suffers from a form of muscular dystrophy. And last night, we had our police department conduct a safety meeting with our Chamber of Commerce for our local businesses. It was a very informative meeting to help our businesses stay safer. A lot of important information was shared. On hand was also our file marshal, Steve Koechek, and Pete Pius, president of the ambulance corps, to provide safety information and to answer questions. They were all extremely helpful. If any local business or resident wants a free safety check on their property, please call Detective Lipdeck at 201-796-0700, extension 118. Also, what was discussed last night from the business owners on Market Street, we have a walking post that, uh, police department implemented recently, and they said, you know, we'd like to have one on Market Street, because we would feel much safer and get to know the newer police officers and build a relationship with them. So the chief is going to be, um, trying to implement that in the spring, because he thought that was another proactive measure, and the businesses were very happy to hear about that. So when you have these meetings, whether it's 10 people or 20, um, progress does come out of them. We hear what the businesses want and need, and our, our police department, our fire and ambulance, try to accommodate them, and we work hard as a team. And last night was one of the best meetings I've gone to in a long time. Everybody left that meeting feeling encouraged, hopeful, and a team player. So I, I thank the chief, he's here, and I thank the other departments that came and also gave valuable information. Uh, lastly, the Residents Assistance Program is now accepting new unwrapped toys until December 10th for children ages 12, I'm sorry, 2 to 12, for the holiday toy drive. These toys are collected and will help Elmwood Park families in need. The drop-off is right here at Borough Hall from 8:30 to 4:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. If those hours do not work for people that work late, please contact me by email, alpellegrine@elmwoodparkandj.us, and I will make special arrangements for you. I can come at night, or you can drop them off at my house. Please give if you can. It brings smiles to our community's children that really might wake up to not having anything. Um, I'm really passionate about this, and I just have to thank our businesses. Some of them are collecting toys for this toy drive, and everybody's been working hard. The workers in the, um, building here have been bringing things in, and this, to me, is really what our community is about. It's about teamwork. There are families in this town that are in need of food, that are in need of toys for the holidays, in need of clothing, and when we rally together, we're some special force in this town. So I want to thank everybody for what they contributed so far, and I thank you for those that anticipate contributing. That's it, progress.
Mr. Gullbeck.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. Um, just want to welcome Ms. Delaney to the Elmwood Park community, um, and maybe you should just wave, so everyone knows who Ms. Delaney is. Uh, welcome to our, our team here. Um, as we can see now, um, the mayor and council have dealt with the, the vacant clerk piece of our work, and now in December, I think we can deal with the BA piece and resolve that, and, uh, head into 2019. Um, I think 2019 will be a very strong and productive year here in Elmwood Park, and I'm very much looking forward to it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Does anybody need a frozen turkey? I have one in my back, the back of my car. Any old lady want to get rid of it? As I take it, maybe I give it to somebody. Hello, everybody. The clock is up. I've received many positive responses. Thank you. You know, I'm gonna talk with my hands. And, uh, the clock was a gift from TD Bank North. It was, uh, for many years stored in a DPW garage. Uh, we really have ribbon, uh, cutting sometime before Christmas. You know, the clock isn't working now, because although, although we try, the, the clock works. Now they have to install a box, and then it will be working for sure. So, um, I know a few people want to see the clock between Mall Boulevard and, uh, Market Street. At the moment, you know, the, there's a mess over there, a lot of mud, so we can do that. But when, uh, TD North gave us the clock, they want it where it is today. So if we get another one, another gift, I'd be more than happy to put on, uh, Market Street and the Boulevard. That'd be a nice place. I feel it. All right, if you notice here, we have a new Christmas tree. The old tree was invested with termites and ants. So Scott told me, I say, cut it down. And so we purchased this tree. This tree's supposed to last up 20 years. Uh, in the state, they have a same one in the Motor Town, has already been there for 13 years. It still looks good. Uh, the tree could be made taller by adding panels. If somebody want to make it taller next year, we just have to buy a few panels and make it four feet higher. I, I spend many hours each day in my office, and many people come to see me with many different problems, and I'm trying to help them as much as I can. DPW, uh, doing a fantastic job, so it's also the building department. People call me when, excuse me, the pole lights are out. I take the number from the pole, I call my secretary, give it to her. It takes at least two to three weeks before they can replace the lights. We don't replace lights. Public service does. So people send me picture of a few bottles on the sidewalk, they expecting me to go pick them up. I cannot be all over town. I pick up garbage. If you see lots of garbage, call DPW, call the building department. If they don't show up, then you call me. If it's only a few bottles, please, pick them up yourself if you can. This is your town. Let's keep it clean. All right, the last I have to say that, I just want to thank everyone who came, uh, to the mess for my sister. My sister passed away a month ago. We celebrated the mess last night. Our lady of Pompeii in Paterson, in Deucalion. I just want to say thank you to my friends. Thank you for being there last night. It was very nice. I have nothing else. Congratulations, Erin Delaney. Good luck to you. Thank you. I may have a motion to open the floor for public comments. If there's, if there's no objection, I will open the floor for public comments. Have a move?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to be heard? Please come here, hold up the mic. Can you please state your name and address? Because I don't even know who you are.
I don't know who I am. Is it on?
I think it's on.
I think you can all hear you.
Yeah?
With or without.
I'm deaf, okay?
With or without.
Conversation with the mayor.
I'll lend you one here.
That's why I'm not. James Vico, 64 Willow. Um, I wanted to echo one thing the mayor said, in case the people didn't get it. We get a lot on the social media, people writing all crazy stuff. They wrote about the tree. The tree was infected, and so people know. It had to come down, it was gonna fall down and, and God forbid, kill somebody. So now people know why the tree's gone, and we got a new tree. You know, we'll make it bigger next year, if you want, whatever, okay?
Termites don't like this tree.
I'm sorry?
Termites don't like this tree.
But, you know, people write all about it. They took the tree down now, you know? And unfortunately, that's how they speak, "they." Your "they," the whole council. They took our tree down. No, the tree's dead. Took it down, it's gone. Okay? Um, I wanted to echo on Councilman, uh, Burke's comments, um, this position that's been taken politically, that's, you know, I, like, you guess, who cares? It's, you know, we hear all kinds of rumors, and I'm one of them that I've heard a lot. I got a phone call tonight, and somebody told me, oh, this job came from a state senator now. That's the new one out there, okay? It's a bunch of baloney. It's a bunch of rumors, it's a bunch of, um... Only thing that concerns me with hiring a new clerk is, I'm sure she's more than capable in doing the job, and I wish her a lot of luck. I'm sure we had a lot of candidates that are. You know, people have ran other towns, people that know the laws. I'm, I'm so concerned, and, you know, I've been sitting here for two days saying, should I even say anything? A lot of people have just said to me, Jimmy, don't say nothing. I can't, that's not me. I can't not say something. This is the second hiring we've had that we won't pull somebody from our ranks to be moved up. The first one was with the fire department. Uh, everybody knows I, I was, you know, for Ronnie Presser, I felt that he gave a lot of time to this community, so why not reward him with a part-time job? It didn't go that way. But we didn't even pick two fellas that worked. We didn't do a promotional exam from within, and, and that bothered me. The two fellows that, they're there, imagine how they maybe felt that they weren't even chosen for the job. Then we had our BA leave. When our BA left, Barbara became, well, act, what do you call, interim clerk or whatever, because she was a deputy clerk. She has all the qualifications. In fact, correct me if I'm wrong, we sent her to school to get all those qualifications. She's been running the office perfectly. There's been no complaints whatsoever, so I didn't even know we needed a borough clerk. That's kind of really what got, we have a borough clerk that's doing a good job. Um, I'm sure it was very tough on you people to do this. When it snows and Borough Hall is closed, Barbara walks across the street and opens it. She's here till 6 o'clock at night, okay? She, uh, um, comes 10:30 at night when the routers are down, so the police department can open their computers and get them going. I just don't understand why she wasn't picked. Everybody likes her, everybody says she, says she does a great job, but yet we didn't pick her, and now we're hiring somebody that's gonna make more money than her, and we're gonna tell her, but you have to train that person for the job, because you know the job, and that person doesn't. So we're gonna give them more money, but you're gonna train her. There's bottom line is, you say what you want, if she doesn't teach her, who's gonna teach her? She has to be taught the job, and she has to go to school, and she has to learn the job. Okay? Um, that's my feelings. I supported Barbara, everybody knows that, and, uh, she's got a lot more class, and I, I wish I could do what she's doing right now. I really do, because I can't believe what's being done to her. I'm in tears over here. Uh, um, I, I really can't believe that we did this to this young lady, and she's still here tonight, standing up and doing her job, what she's supposed to do. And we've set a precedence in this town now. We are not gonna promote from within. Could've gave the job to Sandy, or to him, or to me, or anybody, at least a, a resident, but we didn't. We didn't. And somebody without any experience in this field whatsoever.
Thank you, Jimmy.
And I'm, I'm, I'm really, this one got me. I'm really, I'm really ashamed. I'm, I'm, I truly am. That woman there got a lot of class, more than I got, I can tell you that right now, what she's putting up with right now. And I don't know how you just look her in the eyes, man.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up here?
Jeffrey Frytag, 35 Hillman Drive, just a second. One thing I'd like to ask, as I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, out of the eight candidates that were chosen, one dropped out, reducing it to seven, only one person did not fulfill the quote-unquote minimum requirements of the position. Is that, am I correct in believing that?
Everyone who applied and was interviewed met the standards that we set out in the ad.
Was everyone a registered municipal clerk?
I don't think it, no, everyone was not a RMC.
How many weren't?
At least two, I want to say, but you can't quote me on that.
Okay. Is the one that has been hired this evening, Ms. Delaney, a registered municipal clerk?
Uh, not at the time, at this moment.
Okay, so she will have to fulfill these courses, and whose time is she going to attend these on?
I, I think those are de, details that are gonna be ironed out in, in the near future.
Okay, there are many things put on Facebook, and I will ask this question, I'm sure people maybe are wondering about it, but there is a picture where, um, I believe four members of the council were there with Ms. Delaney, the council mayor. Was this discussed at all at that meeting, or at that particular affair?
That was in Atlantic City, at the League, League of Municipalities. Uh, Assemblywoman Siobhan Desumter, who represents the 35th Legislative District, had an event at one of the hotels, as you want to call it. And Elmwood Park and Garfield are both in the 35th Legislative District.
Right.
So it was natural to, uh, to see, you know, members from other towns there. Um, as far as was anything discussed with this?
Hmm?
Not to my knowledge. I certainly don't go down to Atlantic City to, to deal with ongoing business.
Three other board, uh, three other members.
Yeah, I mean, in fairness, I think there was a lot of places where four of us were together at the same time.
No, I'm not saying about.
Yeah.
I'm saying, was it discussed?
I, absolutely not, I mean, to my knowledge, but no.
Anybody else? Nobody discussed anything?
No, I did not discuss it. I speak for myself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to come up and speak?
Doris, special 120 to work, we look for having them. Maggie, you were talking about myself. I was not invited to the interviews, and I am not a sitting councilperson, so I should not have been sitting here.
I'm sorry, Doris, were you not in our work session executive when this was discussed? Because you were sitting there when we were discussing interviews. You were invited to other executive work sessions, so don't cut that one that you were not invited. If you weren't invited, I feel sorry for that you weren't there. But you've been in executive work sessions.
I was in Vermont with my brother dying. I'm sorry I couldn't make the meeting. But you know what? You don't have to accuse us of not coming to something that we were there. We, yes, I did her the meeting on November 20th, but I had an emergency, I was flying to Vermont. I could not come to this meeting. I'm sorry that I disappointed you. And when I sit on this council as a, a member of the council of Elmwood Park, I am sitting because I am a member of this town for 72 years. I'm not sitting because I'm a Republican or a Democrat. I'm sitting for these, the Republicans and the Democrats of this whole town. I am for here, this residents of Elmwood Park, not because I'm a Republican or a Democrat, and I want this person here and that person. I'm sitting for the people of Elmwood Park. Thank you.
I'm sorry about your brother's passing, but your statement that you weren't inviting was inaccurate.